My name is Noka Decruep and I am a social worker. But I also am a school board trustee for, at the Peel District School Board. I got elected in 2014, so this is my second term. I represent the incredible communities of Meadowvale, Lisgar, Aaron Mills, and Churchill Meadows. So words nine and ten in Mississauga. And it's been a wonderful journey. I've really focused all of my work on equity, inclusion, and changing the system to really better serve our diverse community in Peel. And we've done a lot of work and it's been, it's been one, one interesting journey with ups and downs and, and a great deal of difficulty. But also, when I look back, so worth it and, and you know, hopefully the, this, the changes we're making will be long lasting and that we will continue to see progress in the system.
Yeah, it's, it is legacy work and it just keeps, like it really requires generations to keep reinforcing those stories and reinforcing the work in many ways. So, and that's, I've talked a little bit about my experience with my sons in the Peel Board. We talked about, you know, the region Peel with their, their anti-black racism report. And I've touched on those things, but even before I go there, it's just really interesting to have you here because I speak to two levels here. One, the Pilates community, the fitness community in, in general on Instagram is global. So there's people in California and Turkey and like all over Austria who watch it. So I really focus on that global work. But then also I focus on hyper local work as well as what I say. So I want to encourage people who are watching this, okay, yeah, you know, you're doing fitness, you're helping people and stuff, but like really what are you doing for your community? What's happening? And I'm, it's as sad as like using George Floyd as a marker in terms of time, but you see how that really opened up the door for conversation and for more people to pay attention to like the work that you're doing when it comes to a report with the Peel Board. Okay, cuz that, cuz I know, you know, that sort of thing has come up in the past and people just like skirted, you know, away or sweep it under the carpet. But then it happens in this social context and now people pay attention. Right? So can you kind of speak a little bit more to the Peel Board, that situation with that report? First of all, and then let's go from there?
Absolutely. So the interesting thing about the Peel Board, which I think had never happened in any organization or in any area before, is that you had two elected officials who were myself and Cathy McDonald, who is incredible, who just refused to accept the system as it was. We were not there to be politicians. I did not get into education because I wanted, you know, to, to go to events and, and, and take photos and say, everything is great and defend the system. I got into this business because I wanted change and she got into this business because she wanted change for her kids and for her community. And we just refused to take no for an answer. So how the report came about, and I think that's the major difference. I, I, there's no way that I would believe that our, the problems in Peel don't exist in every school board in Ontario. I, I would not believe that for a minute. The only difference is that we just refused to, to accept it. And we refused to accept change that was minimal or that was going to take, or yeah, or performative or, or that's, that's gonna take, you know, fifteen years to see a difference. We want to change right now. And we knew that the board itself, as much as, you know, we had heard, okay, we want to make changes and sure we'll make some changes. And oftentimes they actually weren't on board with making a lot of changes. We knew that that wasn't gonna work. And we knew we weren't gonna spend twenty years trying to fight for the same thing. So we, it was interesting because a lot of things happened that actually, you know, got a lot of attention from the ministry. And, you know, before even the unfortunate death of George Floyd happened, what had taken place at the Peel Board itself in, in that room was, was so concerning. Where you had a, an elected board refusing to listen to the community, refusing to apologize, you know, for, for, you know, harmful, harmful comments that were made and, and the community was really, really angry with that. So, you know, the ministry started paying attention. We went to the ministry and we, we said, we need your help. And then the minister ordered a, a report of, a review of the board. So once that happened, we had the opportunity to tell the stories. Because, you know, we can, we can create all of the noise in the media that we want. But at the end of the day, in order to change a system, you know, we had to ensure that we actually had legitimate stories that people were gonna come forward and tell. And we had hundreds and hundreds of people come forward and tell their stories. From staff to community members to students, it was just incredible. And then the reviewers, you know, put out a, a, a report that essentially highlighted all of the concerns that were going on at the Peel Board. Where black students were suspended three times as much as, as everybody else. Where, you know, young black girls told stories of being suspended for wearing hoop earrings to school. And that's, that, that's incredible. That's, that's just incredibly shocking. And then we also had issues with, with kids getting arrested in schools. You know, and, 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 you know, too much, too frequent interactions with police in our school system that were, were, you know, first of all, a lot of unnecessary, but also very, the way that the administration was going about it was very, you know, just, just call the police about everything, right? So, and, and that was, that was really unfortunate. So, so the report came out and that actually gave us a lot of, a lot of legitimacy. Because we were talking about things that people weren't talking about yet. And it was-
Or people were talking about it and it wasn't being heard.
Yes.
At the parent, like the parent level, like-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or you'd get things like, well, you know, there's problems in, in every, in every system. Or what are we gonna do about it? We can't change this.
Yes.
Or we're just gonna put up our hands and be like, we can't change, what are we gonna do? So anyway, the, so the report came out and we, we had twenty-seven directives that the minister issued to, for the Peel Board to make the changes that we were supposed to make. And, but, you know, myself and Cathy did not have faith that the board would carry the work the way it needed to be done and proceed with it. So-
Nor I, for the record. I read that, I was like, well, let's see how this turns out, right?
Let's see how this is gonna work out. And it's actually interesting because we still have opposition, even though we're under supervision. People don't realize, we still have opposition to the directives from some, some members of the board. I have colleagues who are completely against de-streaming. When we know that de-streaming is, is crucial to ensuring that, that our, all of our students succeed. So, so what ends up happening is one of the directives we were required to mediate with the board. So Cathy and I refused to mediate. And, which essentially broke the directives. And, or, and then the minister had to do something and he sent an investigator to figure out why, you know, why this is happening. And then the investigation report came out, which was worse than the review to begin with. And then the supervisor was placed, and the board was placed under supervision. And we continue to be under supervision and, and I'm, I'm not shy about this. I think, I hope we continue to be under supervision for the remainder of the term until we have a new elected board that is going to better represent the, the interests of our community and, and is more understanding of the climate in which we are living.
So, sorry, Noka, I didn't, to jump in there, but like when you say better representative of, can you explain like, like what would be in your mind a better representative board?
So a board that's focused on equity and inclusion. A board that, whose members are, you know-
Representative.
Representatives, absolutely, like, you know, of the community, more diverse, but also critical thinking. Because I think that is the key to all of this. I do not want to see another school board get elected that's receiving reports and just, and I'll give you an example, the report with the, from the integrity commissioner. Best example. The report, the, the, about the, and for your viewers that may not know, there was an incident with a trustee who called a school that has a high number of black and brown students, McCriminal. And he, and, and there was an integrity commissioner complaint and then the integrity commissioner's report essentially came back saying that he did nothing wrong and it's just all fine and it was just a joke and it's not a big deal. The board received that report. Cathy and I did not, but we're two out of, out of, actually no, there was four people that did not receive that report. But the majority of the board received that report and their, their, their explanation is that they, they were told they have to receive it and they were told that they just have to go along with this. It, it's critical thinking, right? When you are the elected body, you, you have to push back. Your responsibility is to ensure that, you know, you're asking critical questions, that you're pushing the work forward, that you are pushing for more progressive things. It, it's, it's not just about clapping for everyone and, and accepting everything that's going on. So, I, I think those are the things we need to be looking at in our, you know, in the people that are representing our community.
Amazing. Yeah, no, that's, I, I get here on two levels. Like we, we see like people who are here on Instagram and they're talking about what's happening in the fitness community and lack of representation and, and racism and all these different things. It's the same conversation that we're having. It's like, who are the leaders? Who are the perceived leaders? Who are the voices? And, you know, that sort of thing. So it's, it all ties in together, right?
Yeah.
But now, at the same time, we're talking about the officials that are there now. I'm, like, I'm part of the mayor's Black Caucus in that advisory team. And so we talk a lot about civic engagement.
Yeah.
Right? So for young people, it's like, well, how do we, how do you recruit these people? How do you find them? How do we get people interested in even doing this? So I guess, I mean, that's, that's the bigger question. But I guess if you could just paint a picture for us, like, how did you even land in this role? Like, what made you decide that you wanted to be here? Because like you don't look like the typical school board trustee, right?
Very good observation, so-
Thank you. I have a social background as well.
I know, I'm, I'm certainly not your average school board trustee in, in Ontario. I got elected at a very young age and I, I'm a social worker by background. And that's where a lot of my fire comes from. You know, my main concern is, is serving our community and building our, our community in, in, in whatever capacity I'm involved in. So I worked with, I worked with schools when, when I had just finished my schooling and I was working as a settlement worker. So I was working in schools, working with newcomer students and their families to help them settle into the school system. And then I decided that I wanted to run for office and, and I knew that our local, maybe there was somebody here and she's actually quite wonderful. I actually got to know her later, later. But I decided to put my name on the ballot and see how it goes. And I got elected and I did really, I'm not gonna, like, I knew there were problems in the system from my work, my limited work in my, my settlement and, uh, work capacity. But I didn't understand necessarily the extent of the problems. And I didn't, yeah, and I didn't really understand the problem that was on the, at the top, right? You could see like there's issues in the school, you, you, or in any, any schools. But you, I didn't know the top and I didn't know what it was like. And I also didn't know how things work. I got elected when I was twenty-five.
Right, yeah, exactly. So, okay, so and even with that, like, you know, it's like you go into a corporation and you're a contract worker and then there's corporate guys who have been working there the whole time and they don't even see the stuff, cuz they're just doing, I'm just getting my paycheck. I'm just here till I retire. I just, don't rock the boat. And then someone comes in and is like, you guys have been doing like this for so long? So you, I, I'm sure in your limited capacity in the school, must have been looking at things like, why are you guys living with this sort of thing? So then when you go into the school trustee position, then you have an opportunity to speak to them and to affect change. So I can totally see how that happens. Shannon Precor, you may or may not know, she has a quick question here.
I do know Shannon. Hi Shannon.
We were like on the, the school board for, what was it? For Settlers Green back in the day. So we were-
Okay, that's amazing.
Yeah, so I've done my, done my duty too, my civic duty.
Very good. I'm very happy.
Well, thank you. A school board trustee, for those who like, who are not in Ontario, like what exactly does that role entail?
So we are responsible for the governance of a, the school board. So we're responsible for everything public education in the, not just the district, but in the entire board. And our board, the Peel Board, actually is, spans across Mississauga, Brenton, and Kaledon. And if you get to know the communities, they're very different communities. And we have, yeah, and, and there are very different needs across the system. And, and there's representation from, from, from all of the, the different areas. So our job is to be the community's voice and to really look, uh, look out for the best interests of students and the system as a whole.
Yes.
So the, the problem gets, the problem starts between, when you get there, first of all, the problem begins with the fact that people don't know who their school board trustee and they don't vote for school board trustee. And when they do vote for school board trustee, they just go and check the first name they see on the ballot. Yeah, and, and that's a problem. And then the second, so you know, the people who are getting elected often, unfortunately, are getting elected either based on name recognition or, you know, the fact that-
Or very few number of votes, because not that many-
Or very few number of votes, yeah. My first election, I got, I got elected by very few number of votes. My second election, I got elected by a large number of votes, but that's because people knew who I was and people actually came out to vote for me specifically, right? So it's a big, it's a bit different. But my first election, I, I only won by, you know, two thousand something votes. Maybe three thou, I, I'd have to look, three thousand something votes. But it was only like a two hundred vote difference between me and the, and the next person. And I think we need to get our community to be more engaged in this. Because at the end of the day, it's not just the, the engaged parents that are benefiting from being more aware. It's, it's for all of our kids. I have, I have a little one. I did all this for my, my, my little one, honestly. I turned the system upside down because I want my child to grow up and her peers and her friends to have the best opportunities they can have. And, you know, you gotta, we have to, we have to pay attention to our school board trustee. So that's, that's the biggest problem, I think.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, so Noka, you said something earlier that I wrote down, cuz I didn't wanna jump in, but I was like, okay, right, there's something, come back to it. You said, "That's where my fire comes from."
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a lot of fire.
Right, exactly. And now the social work is part of that fire for sure. Cuz I, I get that with my background in counseling and stuff. Like when you're consumed with a passion for something, you stop to care about what people, you start, ceasing to care what people think about it because this purpose is more important than someone's opinion.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. It's, it's about, so, you know, as a social worker, you, in all of my work, and I've worked with victims of domestic violence, I've worked in schools, I've worked with newcomers, I've worked in, in hospitals. I, I currently work at a, at, at a hospital. And I've worked in, in ICU and medicine and in, in, well, I currently work in ICU and medicine in very different areas. When you're a social worker, you get, I get to know the system. You get to know and how it impacts people. You get to know policy and the impact of it on people. You get to know small, small P policies and big P policies and, and, and how all of the system interacts and, and people end up in, in, in the circumstances that they are in. So that gives you a different lens, I think. And that gives you a bit of a fire when you're like, well, this, this is not right. I can't help this person because I don't have the resources to help them. And the reason why I don't have the resources to help them is because the resources aren't there, because they don't exist. So, or whenever like you're trying to help someone navigate a system and, you know, you're coming up against barriers that don't make sense. And honestly, a lot of barriers don't make sense. They just don't. You're like, why do you need to screen kids in grade nine? Like for example, why are we deciding if you're gonna go to university or apply or, or college when you're great, in four, when you're fourteen years old?
Yes, right.
What's the purpose of that?
Right.
So things like that. And then, you know, you kind of, I have a bit of a fiery personality, so mix the two together and-
Yeah, there you go. And then layer into that, being a female, being a person of color, being, you know, like not from Canada originally as an immigrant. Like there's so many things that when you walk into this arena,
Yeah.
that people are already going to have their preconceived ideas of who you're gonna be and how you're gonna be treated.
Yeah, and I think I had to learn, I had to learn how to carry myself in, in rooms. Like I said, I was, I was young. So I had to learn how to, to, you know, how, how to get my voice heard and how to express myself. And, and, you know, people will say all sorts of things that, you know, my tone was a big thing for, for my colleagues at the school board. My, my, and I, I don't speak differently. This is how I sound, right? So, but my tone comes from my personality, my background, you know, where I grew up. I grew up in Beirut. I did not grow up in, 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 in Mississauga. So it's, it's, there's cultural, you know, implications and all of that. But, you know, I had to, I had to learn how to be taken seriously. And sometimes, you know, that, that comes across as, you know, being a little bit more, more vocal and being a little bit more, you know-
Is it aggressive?
Not aggressive. I would say a little bit more, I don't know what the word is, but a little bit more, you know, maybe in your face. And I think, I think it's part of being- Yeah, I think it, it's part of being young. It's part of being a woman. It's part of being racialized. It's part of being an immigrant, right? You know, I can't be that person on the side who is quiet and, and going along with everything. Though I, I would say that, you know, as I've gotten older, things have changed. And I think when you, when you kind of build, you know, a good reputation, that people are, you know, more likely to listen. So things, things are changing. And I think also with representation that's becoming everywhere, I think things are actually changing, not just at Peel, but everywhere. And I think that's helped a lot of people and it's also helping women like me.
Well, yeah, you're paving that path in that way. So can you give an example of, well, actually you kind of did there in terms of just like that, that's being perceived as being almost like confrontational or that, having a, a certain attitude that is, what's the word? I know, I know what you're saying too. Not assertive, not like, not off-putting, there's something in there that is just like, it's just, it doesn't, doesn't just flow with the way that everyone is doing things.
Yeah.
You know, and that baseline understanding of racism as it is, is sameness. Everyone wants things to be exactly the same. There's no room for diversity. So if it's not the same, it's uncomfortable. And if it's uncomfortable, how do we interpret that discomfort that we're feeling?
Yeah, and I think that's exactly, exactly what it is. It's, it's the idea of, you know, why are you so mad, right? But I'm not mad. I'm just, I'm just trying to express what I'm trying to say. And I, and Cathy got that a lot too. Yeah, and Cathy would get that a lot. And she'd be like, why, why do they think we're so mad? And, and I think that's a common thing. And, and it's that assertiveness, it's that voice that, it's the voice people aren't used to hearing.
Yes. Not in those arenas, for sure.
No, and if I'm not used to hearing your voice, I'm gonna interpret it as a threat. Because what are you saying to me? And I think the biggest thing that we experienced at the board is that a lot of our colleagues were trustees long before us. And if there's, there was a lot of defensive behavior and a lot of, you know, because if I'm saying the system is racist, then who's responsible for that?
Right. I've been here for fifteen years and I haven't done anything about the fact that it's racist and you walk in and call it racist. You're calling me a racist.
Or that I don't care, or that I haven't done enough.
Which is all the same as saying that it's on me.
Yeah.
That makes me the enemy.
That makes me the enemy, right? And I think unfortunately, that's what has, because we started our work maybe about like six years ago or I'd have to remember the year, but it's been, it's been a number of years where we tried to do work just through the board. This is before things kind of took a, took a very different turn. And I don't know if you remember, but we had this initiative called the We Rise Together Initiative.
Yes, yes.
Which was a great initiative, but got shelved. Yes, on paper. Great initiative. But then we would ask, well, I would always end up like, I would ask about reports for like updates. And there would be this entire thing. I remember once I asked for an update in public session. Everybody just got all, you know, there was all this discomfort as to why I'm asking for and a progress report. Like I'm just asking for progress report. I don't know what happened with this initiative. But really, that was the problem, right? So, you know, we'd come up with ideas and then nothing gets done. And that was my biggest concern after the review. Like, that is not happening again.
Right. My colleague of mine who was on here, Damon Illy, is a teacher, taught in Japan, came back to Canada just trying to get some jobs. And he was talking a lot about consulting in this field and on these specific topics that you're talking about right now. He landed a job and in this position, every time a black mother came in, they were like, well, she's really angry. Let's find the first black guy to be able to calm her down to be able to speak to this issue. And much like someone's coming here, you're not mad, you're passionate. When we don't understand people's culture and where they're coming from and their past experiences, all these things that get layered into it, it gets misinterpreted. And then it becomes this issue. And then he saw that a lot. And then he was brought in to pacify someone's anger for someone who's not even angry. Like they're just passionate, right? So we see that all the time. So I'm just reading another comment here. Hard issues require self-reflection. Yeah, right?
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, I think that's been a journey for, for a lot, like, you know, today and tomorrow, actually. The reason why we're not starting school like everybody else is because we have additional PD days for our staff at Peel on equity and anti-racism. And, and those are hard. Those are hard days. When we are asking, you know, almost twenty thousand people to, you know, to, to reflect on, on ideas of colonialism and ideas of, of anti-racism and centering student, student voice and anti-oppression and, and all of that. These are difficult conversations. And, and, you know, we're starting to, to really, and I hope all school boards actually do the same thing, but, you know, I'm only responsible for Peel. So, but, you know, and, and that's important. And people will say, what, what, how could you start schools two days later? Just to do extra PD days because everybody's starting school today? Well, this is important. We're gonna start with the year in a way where we make sure that all of our students are succeeding and all of our students are heard and all of our student, you know, population is being served in, in the best way that we can. So I think it's about making it a priority. And, and not just, you know-
Performative wise.
Not performative, not just like a side thing that you do because you have to and there's a checkbox that you have to do. It's about making it a priority. This is, this is our, this is our vision for the future. And to be honest, you see a lot that's going on in Canada. And to be honest, you see a lot that's going on in Canada and in Ontario. Um, especially with, you know, some of the things that you're seeing with um, uh. Some protests and and things like that and and, you know. A lot of that, I I believe the education response, uh, the system is responsible for myself. Because we educate people. Everybody, everybody. For the most part. I mean, some people get homeschooled, but most people in our society. Are gonna go through our education system.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
So, if we don't um, instill values of anti-racism and equity and inclusion. And then we look thirty years and we look at our country and we say, what is happening here?
Right.
Who's responsible for that?
Of course, yeah, right. Well, the schools and the parents, right? Like, it's, it comes back to to home.
Yeah.
And and then that, once again, kind of comes full circle to what we're doing here, is that like, you as a parent. Thought about your child and your child's peers and that generation. So you put your name in the hat. You're getting your hands dirty. You're on that front line. So that sort of thing is, is the piece, right? Like, I mean, we can sit back and complain or we can get ourselves engaged.
Yeah.
Or we can connect with those who are engaged. If if someone is watching this and they're like, I could never do that, fine, that's not your calling. But who are you connecting with that is doing that? How are you supporting the people that have that gift and talent? And time or whatever it is, right? Like, are you supporting them or are you beating them, right? Like, you need to do something with it.
And I think that's, that's the most important uh, thing. Sure, not everybody wants to, uh, and and not everybody's comfortable with that. Not everybody wants to be in public life, to be honest. It's not fun either. You know, there's a lot of scrutiny, um, you know, um, and it's, it's not easy. Um, eh, eh, but like you said, just being engaged, uh, bringing issues up. And how do you support the people who are doing it? How do you um, keep people, um, keep people accountable, keep me accountable, right?
Yeah.
I've had to think of uh, through issues myself, uh, to think about.
Yeah.
Exactly. It it's not easy. It doesn't, it's not like I wake up in the morning and you give me an issue in front of me and I'm like, oh, this is, this is, this is the side I'm on. Figured it out. I knew it when I was born.
Right.
No, I talk to people. I listen. I I call friends. I say, what do you think of this? Um, I'm having a hard time understanding this issue. People explain to me. Um, I've had people call me and and and, you know, give me, um, give me help. Um, and and I listen like, okay, you know what? I think you're right.
Yes.
I think I, you, you, you really um, helped me understand something. So, yeah, it's not like. It's, it's not like you, people either have it or or they don't. It's, it's a work in progress. Um, the biggest thing is, don't get defensive.
Okay, so real talk.
Yeah.
Hi- highlight in this school trustee position and low light, like what has been like your toughest moment in this where like, you know what? Peace out. I'm done today.
Um, the chair of the board, uh, either cutting my mic off or um, threatening to cut my mic off. Which happened quite a bit.
Really?
Or that night, the uh, the night when we uh, I put the motion for, to review the policing uh, protocol on the board, on the floor. And, you know, everything just went south because they just didn't want to talk about it and he didn't let me, he didn't let me read the motion. He just completely ruled it out of order and the community was very upset. And he just wanted to, the the chair at the time. Um, he uh, decided we're just gonna take the the meeting to, to, to the other room, the the private, so we're gonna have our private session instead of public. And I was so upset, I'm, I'm not going in there and I'm staying outside. And then they ended up calling the police. It's just, that was probably. That was, that was like, where am I?
Yes. Do you feel like you're on a TV show? Yeah. Some like political TV show. Chair Springer, that's, yeah.
What is happening here? I couldn't understand how anybody would think that's okay.
Right.
Uh, and that was probably the worst, the worst night. But I've had other nights where like, I'd be speaking about something and they were just like, cut me off.
Wow. Yeah, you know, it's, and that's, that that's pretty extreme. And I have to say, you know, as I was preparing for this. I usually don't, like, Noka, I don't usually take a lot of time to prepare for these and not because of any of the reasons. But I want it to be a real authentic conversation on screen. So like, I'm hearing stories for the first time and I don't have to be like, what?
Yeah.
Really? Like, that fake stuff, right? So I kind of just go with the flow with it. But I did go on YouTube to watch like some TV interview that you did maybe a year or two years ago for uh, some local thing. And it was interesting, like besides hearing you talk and hearing a little bit about your background, the thing that I picked up was the fact that. Maybe because of your youth or because of your appearance or being a female or whatever it is, or even culturally, you were repeatedly cut off. Oops. Sorry, my phone just like.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, right, so you were repeatedly cut off. You were, it's almost like he wasn't listening to your answer. Like, he asked you a question. So now what about the, like, and he was doing that sort of thing? And I was just watching that, like, it wasn't this, like you were saying, this really aggressive attack as much as it was just a disregard for your person.
Yeah. Yeah, and and this is, this is at the, at the school board?
No, that wasn't even a school board thing. It was just like a TV thing, just like a.
Oh, really? Okay, I'd have to watch it again. Honestly, I will say, being, being young, being female, being ethnic, uh, being um. You know, a vocal uh, person, it it's, it's just not been, it's not been easy. Um, but I've had some good moments. Um.
Yes.
I think I, I, I take so much pride in, in the work and I take so much pride in the success that we've had.
Absolutely.
And just the changes, like just walking through a school um, last week. And seeing murals on the wall that would have never, I don't think would have ever happened three years ago. Um, or seeing, you know, our staff and our administration and how much more representative they are now. Of our student population.
Absolutely.
And that just wasn't the case. And I don't think that was, that would have happened naturally if we hadn't done all this work. So, I think I take so much pride in, in the changes. But I know it hasn't been easy and I know it's not going to get easier.
No.
Because I don't think, for me, at lo- at least, I don't think it's ever gonna be easier. I think I'm constantly going to, to um, fight that fight for myself in order to be heard, so that I can represent other people. And I think that's gonna be a constant battle. But.
Do you thi- you get some momentum too along the way, will you not?
Yeah, and I think, you know, people join you. Um, people, I think the most important thing is, is your message. And having a clear message that, that people can get on board with. My message was very clear from day one and it's still very clear from day one. I'm here to do what's in the best interest for students and what's in the best interest of the system. And, you know, to, to um, change the, the, the barriers that exist that are, um, you know, harming. Um, our racialized students. And um, so as long as your message is clear. And you believe in what you're doing, you have to just believe in what you're doing because otherwise it's impossible. When people like, you know, when people shut you down or don't listen to you and all of that. Um, you know, that can make you feel really, really, really bad. Um, and and I've been, I've had those days, obviously. Um, where I've been like just unable to sleep and I'm just like, I can't believe this is happening. But um, when you believe in what you're doing and you have a purpose and you, you know you're doing the right thing. And it, it, it just, you, you, you get, you get a good night's sleep and you get right back, um, right back on track.
That's so good, Noka. Like, that's, that's so inspiring because I think, you know, I I put like, what is your potential? And all these things you're talking about are, your, your objective was to do it in our lifetime. It's not something that, oh, the next generation could figure it out. Or the next term, people can figure it out. Let's push to see what can happen now instead of getting comfortable. And that takes work and that takes seeing the bad guy sometimes. And that takes like ruffling the, you know, the sheets on the bed. So people can see that it's not gonna stay exactly how it's always been. Um, and you're doing that. And I, I really appreciate having a different voice saying the exact same thing.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, I think that's, that's the message that people need to hear in whatever context, whatever area of passion they're in, is to do it like that. So, good on you.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, any other comments? Anyone here? Oh, oh yeah, sorry. There's support for schools was saying, I think more students in Peel should know uh, more about why they're actually starting school two days later. Great point. I think you might pull that soundbite out and and uh, make it a small, like a separate piece, just so people could hear that. Um, because, you know, honestly, I didn't know that either. And my son's actually, well, he's in different Peel this ter- this term, yes, right? So that's.
Yeah, yeah. No, um, it's, this is part of the work we're doing in Peel. Um, and uh, you know, if, if, if we're gonna change a system, we have to change it from top to bottom. Um, and that's gonna take some time and it's gonna take some training. It's gonna take some work. And um, at the end of the day, we are an organization or all of education is a human-driven organization. Our biggest resource is people.
Right.
So we have to invest in our people. And how do we invest in people? It's by making sure that we are training them, we are preparing them. Um, because you can't, you can't, um, you can't not provide opportunities uh, for learning. Um, and then expect things to just change on the road.
Yes, absolutely. Joel Crosby saying, I really enjoyed listening to everything you have accomplished. Very inspiring.
Thank you.
Yes. Well, Noka, afterwards, what I'm gonna do, just so you know, is I'm gonna do, like, I'll send you the replay for this. And eventually this will be turned into a podcast too. So we can pull different pieces of what you're saying, which are so good. And I hope that it does inspire people to get that level of civic engagement and make a difference in their own community at the same time. So thank you so much for your time today. Like, I really, really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much and thanks for having me.
Yes, all right. Thank you to everyone for joining us. Thanks for all your comments. And we are out. Thanks, Noka.
Bye, thank you.